Thank you. Um, okay, so let's just in. So Cyber Ben ICT is a consulting firm that is focused on helping businesses develop a cyber security culture. We also help in improving IT processes for businesses. And again, we're focused on helping individuals like yourself join the cyber security workforce. Here's our partnership with ISC two, where we'll be leveraging their e-learning platform for the certified in cyber security course. For our guest speaker today, we'll be having Mr. Chukwuka Onyekwe. We were, we attended the same university, Middlesex University. We also worked in the same organization GT Bank for about two, three years. And he has moved on to Standard Bank Group. He's a certified incident manager. He's a forensic analyst. He's also done the ISC two certified in cyber security exam. And some of his role as a security operations center analyst involves managing and maintaining, you know, the organization's IT infrastructure, ensuring that they are safe. So we brought him in today to help us, you know, digest today's topic, which would be on network security. But for today, we'll be discussing most of what you see here. And if you've gone through your study module, please thumbs up if you've done that. You should have gone through some of this as well. But before we begin to take questions, I will invite Mr. Chuk to please introduce himself and we can start the session. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Please confirm if you can hear me, please.
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Yes, we can. Very much. Thank you very much, Benedetta. Thank you for the funny introduction. Thank you. So Benedetta has actually said it all. My name is Chukwuka, Chukwuka Onyekwe. But I prefer to recall Chuk. So I don't know why. It's just me. It's just a personal preference. Not that I'm trying to shy away from my, from my Igbo, Igbo side of Nigeria, but it's just my preference. I've always liked it that way. So I'm a cyber security analyst, a cybersecurity analyst, basically. So in standard bank group. So basically, what I do is that my monitor, the network, the environment, to ensure that bad guys don't come in, bad guys from outside, and also bad guys from inside. So bad guys from inside such as employees, disgruntled employees and the likes of that. I've met Benedetta since, I met Benedetta in uni once. And after that, I didn't see her again until I came to GT. And then I met her and then I was opportune to work under her. And she, she helps me to learn the law. And then she left me and then I stayed and then I left. That's, that's a brief, that's a brief history about me, a brief background about. So this class, what I'm going to explain, I'll be taking the OSI model. But there's something I believe in. I believe in learning from everybody because the truth is that in this journey of cyber security, you cannot, cannot know it all. You can always learn from others. Even though there are six months experience, there's something you can learn from that person. So if you have any questions during the course of this presentation, please feel free to stop me and ask. Even if I'm not able to answer, I'm sure that Benedetta as well, she, she, she's quite versatile. She knows a lot. Yeah, that'll be good to give you, give you an answer for your exam as well. For those of you that are also looking to continue this cyber field. Because this is like the basics of everything. You visit the website, for example, you type facebook.com, but all you see is you see your Facebook page. And then you log in and you continue whatever you're doing. Oh, I'm breaking off. Sorry. So just keep me on, please. Oh, sorry.
We're just gonna wait a little bit for Mr. Chuk to check his connectivity. But we can always drop our questions in the chat box. Have any? And also from your study sessions, are there any clarifications you would like us to address? And we can do that. Yeah. So Chuk, when you're ready, you can come back on. But then the whole idea for today's class will be taking you through, he will be taking you through the OSI model, which is displayed on the screen. So I, he's back and I'll let him take. Thank you.
Okay, can, can you hear me properly now?
Uh, yes, I can. Thumbs up.
I can, yes.
Okay, fantastic. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, guys. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. You're muted. I think you've gone unmuted.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, oh, here's, oh, just a moment, please. Nigeria connectivity. I'm not ashamed Nigeria, but let's just give him a few moments. If you have any questions, like I've mentioned, have, have we all, you know, completed this module for your self-study? You can unmute and please speak. If you haven't, you have.
Yes, I, I have.
Okay, and I guess you have questions for us? We can address. But I would let Chuk just do a rundown of, you know, the OSI module and then we can go further. So welcome back, Chuk. Please carry on.
Please don't be offended, everyone. Please, someone, I'm using my phone. Someone tried calling me. That's what happened now. Okay, so the OSI model, it's divided into seven layers. It divided into seven distinct layers. Now, in terms of communication in the network, it starts from the top down to the bottom. So seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. But this explanation I'm going to do, I'm going to start from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, but in terms of communication, so when you are communicating, when you network, when you send your request to Facebook, for example, when it starts communicating, it starts from seven down to one. But because I want to explain this for, for, for people in this call and also for myself, I'm going to start from one to seven because one is like the basics then down to seven. So the seven layers of the OSI model are, the first one is the physical layer. The second one is the data layer. The third one is the network layer. The fourth one is the transport. Fifth is section. Sixth is presentation. Seventh is application. So that's just like I said, I will start my explanation from one. So number one, the physical layer. So physical, it's, it's, it's a common term, is a word that everyone is familiar with, physical English. When you say something is physical, means something that you can see, something that you can touch. So in terms of the OSI layer, the physical model in this scenario will be your cables. So obviously, before a connection is initiated, you need to plug a cable. So you plug your Ethernet cable. The switch, the cable that comes to the computer that you plug to the power source is, all these are physical, all this part of the physical layer, because there are physical connection cables to use, that you use for connection. The next layer is the data layer. So the data layer, just give me one second. I saw something very important that I just want to talk about, about this data layer. So the data layer, what the data layer basically does is that it helps to establish connection between two physical nodes on network. So let's say my computer is trying to talk to Benedetta's computer. The data layer will help to create a connection. Hey, this is Chuk's computer. Oh, Benedetta's computer says, okay, you are Chuk's computer. How do I know you are Chuk's computer? Oh, this is my MAC address. My MAC address is my unique identifier. Says it's unique identifier on my device that shows that, okay, this computer is actually Chuk's computer. So it helps to create that connection. Okay, so my computer is trying to talk to Benedetta's computer. How do you verify or how do you know that this computer actually belongs to Chuk's? The MAC address. So the MAC address is an example of something that falls under the data, under the data link layer. The third layer is the network layer. So now the network layer is where things start getting interesting. So the network layer has two main functions. The network layer has two main functions. One of the function is to break up segments into network packets. So you send that your request to facebook.com. The network layer breaks it into different network packets for the thing, for whatever you're sending or for the server to understand your request. And the next one is to reassemble, reassemble the packets on the receiving end. So you send a request to facebook.com. It takes that your request, it breaks it into different layers. So when it gets to the Facebook server, it then reassembles that network packet into a format that you understand before it gives you that visualization. So all these things happen in between that split second that you're waiting for your request to load up. So when you type facebook.com and you're waiting for your request to probably come on the screen. So before that, this thing happens, all these activities would have taken place. An example of the network layer is your IP addresses, your routing, your switch, your routers. I hope you know what routers is. So for those that want to do CCNA certified network. So routers are basically things that assign traffic. So you have an environment, for example, you have your environment. What the router does is that, okay, I'm trying to talk to this guy. You're in a four-floor building now. You're in floor one. You're trying to talk to somebody on floor four. When you send your request, the router will take that request. That's okay, this guy is trying to talk to somebody in floor four. Take that request, route it to floor four. Oh, I'm trying to talk to somebody in floor three from floor one. It's take that request from floor one and it's routed to floor three. So that's what routers do. So things like routers, they fall under this network layer. The fourth layer is the transport layer, is the transport layer. So what the transport layer does is that basically, it takes data transferred in the section layer and breaks it into segments on the transmitting end. Example of transport layer is where you get your TCP slash UDP. So TCP basically, when you watch movies on the internet, when you watch movies on the internet, when you stream those movies, when you play your video games, you're using the TCP slash UDP layer. So in terms of video streaming, you use UDP. Then in terms of downloading of movies and stuff like that, that's when you use the TCP layer. So it falls on the OSI layer, layer four, which is the transport layer. The next layer after the transport layer is the section layer. The next layer after the transport layer is the section layer. Sorry, I'm just, because I have some notes written down here. So I'm actually looking at them so that I can better explain. Is the section layer. So this section layer is where you see things like cookies. I'm sure most of you, when you want to visit the website, you see things like, oh, this website wants to store cookies on your browser. Please confirm, something, something like that. So all those cookies do is that it just installs your section. So it keeps a tab somewhere that, okay, Chuk has actually been spent this place. So in the future, if you're trying to visit that website again, in some instances, in some instances, if you're, if what you've done is stored from the cookies can bring it up and present it to you. So that's, that's where the session, that's where the, the section layer falls into. The next layer after the section layer is the presentation layer. The next layer after the section layer is the presentation layer. Now, what the presentation layer does is basically, so what it does, the work of the application or presentation layer is just to prepare data for application. So presentation, so it presents it. Oh, I want to send this information. It prepares this information, presentation, and then it sends it to application layer. So what presentation layer also help defines how devices should encrypt and compress data. So it receives currently on the other end. You send the request. Okay, this request is too large. The presentation layer, what it is, okay, let me put this in a format that I can send it to, I can send it to the application layer. So the application layer will be able to give you a visualization of what you're trying to, to talk about. An example of this, of the presentation layer would be, let's say, your doc file, your HTML file, all those, your file extensions, your OPEC, move, PDF, HTML, and stuff like that. The next layer after that is the application layer. So this is the, this is the first, this is the first one. So in terms of network communication, it starts from seven application down to six, like that, like that, like that. But I started from one to seven. So for the application layer, so the application layer, what it basically is, is basically is used by end user software such as web browsers. So after the presentation layer must have decoded that information, encrypted, compressed it, and sent it. It's now go to the application layer. So the application layer will not take this information. Application layer, examples of application layer could be your web browsers, your email clients. They also help to provide protocols that allow software to send and receive information and present meaningful data to users. That's the work of the application, the application layer. So another, other examples of application layer could be things like your FTP, your file transfer protocol, your WAF, your web application firewall. Please, only, only of these that I mentioned, if you're not familiar with, please, you can maybe ask or write down and I'll be able to explain. So example of usually a FTP file transfer protocol, which is used to transfer files from one device to another, your WAF, this is your web application firewall. So an application firewall that sits on the cloud that protects your front-facing assets. Let's say, for example, banks, the way banks have their, their, their websites, most of those websites, they have this WAF application that sits there to block all this type of attacks. So if somebody is trying to hit them from their side, let's say, did us attack, for example, what the WAF does is that the WAF will block such attacks. It's never allowed coming to the, to the internet banking platform of, of such organizations. Other examples such as HTTP, which is a transfer protocol, but is not secure, is advisable to use HTTPS, which is the more secured version of, of, of that. So this is just a brief and short explanation of the OSI layer. And it's also something that you need to know because for your, for your certified in cyber security exam, for those that are going to write it, there's a possibility that you might get a question on the, okay, I think for mine, I think the question I got was, I should provide a discursive back for the, for the OSI layer. So it's physical data, network transports, and section, and presentation and application in that format. So I think that's all for now and I'll be taking any questions if there any. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Chuk. That was a very detailed explanation and I learned enough as well. So if you have any questions for him, let's please ask. And like you said, for your exam, you need to know the, you know, the, the way it's presented here from level one to seven. And you need to also be aware of what protocol works with what layer, because you may get a trick question that says, you know, what TCP works on what layer? You need to know this for transport layer. So you should be able to match, match up the OSI model to the protocol that works on that. So you wouldn't get complex questions, but you just need to know the basics from level one to seven and type of protocols to it. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? You can unmute and ask or drop your questions in the chat box. While we wait for the questions, we will go back to, okay, so we're running out of time. In case the session ends, please let us join back. We still have about nine minutes before the session ends, or we can use that to take any questions. Please unmute and ask if you have any question. If you're not sure what's being explained, we can take it all over again so that it's clear. Alice means that we all understand what's happening. Please don't be shy to ask your questions. We're all learning. Manuela. Hello, Bellumi, Titi Lio, are we good? If you, if you've taken your module, what were the questions that you encountered in the process at the end of the module?
Yes, so it talked about this switch. And I, I came across that during the module, but I'm not, I don't quite understand what the switch means. Is it like an internet that want, that has to be, like someone has to switch it on or off, or is this something that happens like a software? I don't quite understand.
Okay, will you please take that? Thank you.
Okay, can I go on?
Yes, you can. Thanks.
Okay, I don't know what was the question, but thank you very much. Thank you very much for that question. Okay, so you know how you have switches in your house? You know how you have a switch in your house? So you have a switch in your house whereby you connect, you connect your power cable. You connect the cable with a, with an extension. I know in Nigeria it's called the extension or a socket. You know that socket stuff? Then you plug like your TV cord, your DSD cord, your PlayStation cord, switch on the switch, and then you have, you have lights on that stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so now in terms of that, what this switch is, so if you are in an environment, let's say, for example now, because I love giving examples, because I feel it's his best, you better understand this way. You have, you have a desktop computer. You're like, you've just painted this scenario in your head. You are in an office environment. You have your desktop computer, yeah? All of us, we are working together in the same office. Benedetta has, has, I have mine. We all have desktop computers. Now, you know that those desktop computers, yeah, in terms of, in terms of our internet connection, in order for our desktop computer to have the internet connection, there is a cable, sorry, there's a cable that is plugged in our CPU and then it's plugged to somewhere on the wall. I don't know. I'm trying to paint an image. Are you, are you seeing this image? I'm trying to paint. I'm using it to explain what a switch is. So you have a network cable that is plugged on your CPU and then the other end of that network cable is plugged on the wall, somewhere on the wall. So with that, you have an internet connection. So on that wall, yeah, on that wall where your network cable is plugged, if you check, in most instances, it's numbered. So I don't know where you work, but if you have something like that in your office, maybe when you go to the office, you can just, you can see something like D nineteen. Example, I'm just giving an example. You see something like D nineteen written on that wall where your network cable is plugged. There's an opening there where you just plugged your network cable and you see D nineteen. Now, after you've seen that, somewhere at the back end, so maybe somewhere at the back of wherever your systems are plugged, if you go there, you'll see a device that looks like a, what does it look like? So you'll see a device that has different ports opened on it. So it has, it has different openings. And in those openings, yeah, they have cables that are plugged on them. It's a physical device. It's a physical device. So those ports, when you go there, when you look at, when you look at those numbering, yeah, on that, on that device that has different ports, you'll see somewhere that is written D nineteen. And that D nineteen is the name of that place where you're where your own system, that, you know, your cable, your cable was plugged somewhere and has D nineteen. If you go to that device, you see D nineteen there. So what that basically means is that, okay, so your device is connected to somewhere on the wall and it has a number D nineteen. At the back, the connection has been traced. Okay, so then I say, okay, D nineteen, this port now is for D nineteen. So that's the device that has that different ports and is open. Yes, thank you, Benedetta. I didn't even see that. I'm just seeing this now. Thank you. This is, this is, this is a switch. As you can see now, these are different ports that are opened on it. These are different ports. So you, you see there are numbers on most environments, what you see, you see numbers on them. So this, this device that you have seen now is a switch. So what this does, what this device does is that, okay, Chuk's, it uses ports, D nineteen to browse. Now, I'm going to the switch and I'm ensuring that there's a connection. So D nineteen connection from Chuk's PC to the switch, there's a connection that is already established. So what this switch does is that it helps me to generate traffic. So as I'm browsing, I'm going to facebook.com, my request will go to the switch. So it's from the switch, from that switch, then, then the, the, the request now takes, depends on the environment, it now goes out of the environment. But what happens is that any request that you made from your system, so immediately it goes out from your system to the network port to this switch device. This switch device is what helps to take, to take that request out, to push it out and so that, okay, this guy is trying to, to browse. So if, for example, in your environment, if you don't have this switch, yeah, what happens is that you might not be able to browse, you know, and this might not be able to do anything. Because if you send your request, there's no device that is connecting that is showing that, okay, this guy is trying to browse, this guy is trying to do this. It might just go from your system because there's no connection, no established connection. It's not good. So that device that you just saw, that Benedetta showed on the screen, is a switch device and is a physical device. Thank you very much. And it falls, it falls on layer three. It's on layer three, layer three of the, of the, of the OSI model. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm seeing it on layer two.
Um, let's see, switch, bridge. Um, yes, you would see here. Am I muted? Okay, you can hear me. Okay, yes, you would see it here, but it works on the network layer because this is where the addressing of functions. Let me just find an example for you for the moment. Time. Okay, and also the reason again why you, it would work on the network, on the network layer is because we have our IP addresses assigned to us. But with the detailed explanation Chuk has given, you have a network cable tied to your system, it's plugged to the wall that communicates to the switches. This is where an IP address is also assigned to you. I don't know if you're aware, but every time you're connected to any internet, you have an IP address assigned to you. So this is the work of this switch. So you can, the, the network layer and the data layer, they work hand in hand. The whole, the whole OSI model works hand in hand. They, they share information. So the, on the network layer where we have the switches, your IP address is assigned to you. And with this IP address, you're able to send your requests in and out. And when you're getting your, mentioned with the, the Facebook scenario, but when you're getting your feedback, he knows, okay, this IP address was the one who raised this request and your traffic be routed to you instead of going to someone else. And he made mention of MAC addresses. This is a unique identifier to your system as well. So if I've gone to web browser and I said, www.fish.com, I should get the webpage back. It shouldn't go to someone else's computer because it was me who raised the request. The switch is able to identify that because of my IP address that's just given me and the MAC address that have been assigned to me. So don't worry about it. They work hand in hand. The network, the network layer works hand in hand with the, the data layer. I will also look for an example to explain better. So from my own notices, the data link performs physical addressing by assigning MAC addresses to data packets to form frames. So like I've mentioned, you have MAC addresses that are unique to us so that our requests come back to us after we have initiated it. Um after we have initiated it. So don't let that confuse you, you won't be asked any um. Complex questions in your example, thanks for that question, that was um really, really.